Tyler, I. Tyler, I. Tyler, I. Tyler, I. Tyler, I. What's going on? I put it on repeat so I can go for a jog. Tyler, I. What's going on? I guess it's coming. I guess it's kind of nice to say other people are hearing it on their TV as well at home. I put it on repeat so I can go for a jog. Tyler, I. What's going on? I guess it's coming. I guess it's kind of nice to say other people are hearing it on their TV as well at home. I put it on repeat so I can go for a jog. Tyler, I. What's going on? I guess it's coming. I guess it's kind of nice to say other people are hearing it on their TV as well at home. I put it on repeat so I can go for a jog. Tyler, I. What's going on? I guess it's coming. I guess it's kind of nice to say other people are hearing it on their TV as well at home. I put it on repeat so I can go for a jog. Tyler, I. I guess it's coming. I guess it's kind of nice to say other people are hearing it on their TV as well at home. I put it on repeat so I can go for a jog. Tyler, I. I guess it's coming. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on their TV as well at home. I put it on repeat so I can go for a jog. Tyler, I. I guess it's coming. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on their TV as well at home. I put it on repeat so I can go for a jog. I guess it's coming. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on the TV as well at home. I put it on repeat so I can go for a jog. I guess it's coming. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on the TV as well at home. I put it on repeat so I can go for a jog. I guess it's coming. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on the TV as well at home. I put it on repeat so I can go for a jog. I guess it's coming. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on the TV as well at home. I put it on repeat so I can go for a jog. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on the TV as well at home. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully you only, hopefully, hopefully you heard that once. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on the TV as well at home. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully you only, hopefully, hopefully you heard that once. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on the TV as well at home. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully you only, hopefully, hopefully you heard that once. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on the TV as well at home. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully you only, hopefully, hopefully you heard that once. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on the TV as well at home. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully you only, hopefully, hopefully you heard that once. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on the TV as well at home. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully you Only, only, only heard that once. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on the TV as well at home. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully you Only, only, only heard that once. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on the TV as well at home. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully you Only, only, only heard that once. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on the TV as well at home. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully you Only, only, only heard that once. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on the TV as well at home. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully you Only, only, only heard that once. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on the TV as well at home. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully you Only, only, only heard that once. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on the TV as well at home. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully you Only, only, only heard that once. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on the TV as well at home. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully you Only, only, only heard that once. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on the TV as well at home. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully you Only, only, only heard that once. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on the TV as well at home. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully you Only, only, only heard that once. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on the TV as well at home. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully you Only, only, only heard that once. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on the TV as well at home. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully you Only, only, only heard that once. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on the TV as well at home. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully Only, only, only heard that once. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on the TV as well at home. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully Only, only, only heard that once. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on the TV as well at home. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully Only, only, only heard that once. I guess it's kind of nice to say people are hearing it on the TV as well at home. Only, only, only heard that once. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully Only, only, only heard that once. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully Only, only, only heard that once. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully Only, only, only heard that once. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully Only, only, only heard that once. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully Only, only, only heard that once. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully Only, only, only heard that once. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully Only, only, only heard that once. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully Only, only, only heard that once. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully Only, only, only heard that once. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully Only, only, only heard that once. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully Only, only, only heard that once. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully Only, only, only heard that once. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully Only, only, only heard that once. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully Only, only, only heard that once. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully Only, only, only heard that once. Tyler, Tyler, I. Hopefully Tyler. I Mm.
We're gonna get yours.
I'm trying to make sure if we can stop recording.
Can, can people hear me right now? Can I get a phone?
I can hear you on Zoom.
They can hear me. They can hear right here.
I'm not, oh, my audio is fine. Can, can people hear me right now?
We can hear you while I'll be in the B S.
I can hear you on Zoom.
They can hear me. They can hear right here. And then we're probably gonna have Oh, my audio, the rest of the
Can, can people hear?
So I log down and log back in just when you guys We can hear you while I'll be in the B S.
I can hear you on Zoom.
They can hear me. Do one, they can hear right here. And then we're probably gonna have
I can hear you now, yep.
So you I log down and log back in just when you guys We can hear you while I'll be in the B S.
I can hear you on Zoom.
They can hear me. They can hear right here.
I can hear you now, yep.
So you I log down and log back in just when you guys We can hear you while I'll be in the B S.
I can hear you on Zoom.
They can hear me. They can hear right here.
I can hear you now, yep.
So you I log down and log back in just when you guys We can hear you while I'll be in the B S.
I can hear you on Zoom.
They can hear me.
I can hear you now, yep.
So you I log down and log back in just when you guys We can hear you while I'll be in the B S.
I can hear you on Zoom.
They can hear me.
I can hear you now, yep.
So you I log down and log back in just when you guys We can hear you while I'll be in the B S.
I can hear you on Zoom.
They can hear me. And then be done with your Technology right now.
So she
I can hear you now, yep.
Apologize for that.
So you I log down and log back in just when you guys We can hear you while I'll be in the B S.
I can hear you on Zoom.
So then again. And then be done with your Technology right now.
So she Apologize for that.
So you I log down and log back in just when you guys We can hear you while I'll be in the B S.
I can hear you on Zoom.
So we're gonna move by Technology right now.
So she Apologize for that.
So you I log down and log back in just when you guys We can hear you while I'll be in the B S.
I can hear you on Zoom.
We're gonna move by So, so she Apologize for that.
So you I log down and log back in just when you guys We can hear you while I'll be in the B S.
I can hear you on Zoom. Also
We're gonna move by So, so she Apologize for that.
So you I log down and log back in just when you guys We can hear you while I'll be in the B S.
I can hear you on Zoom.
So we're gonna move by So, so she Apologize for that.
So you I log down and log back in just when you guys We can hear you while I'll be in the B S.
I can hear you on Zoom.
So we're gonna move by So, so she Apologize for that. She Very excited. And you So she She Very excited. And you So she She Very excited. And you So you So she All those
Tyler, I.
All those Can you
Tyler, I.
All those Can you
Tyler, I.
All those Can you
Tyler, I.
All those
Tyler, I.
All those
Second verse tires to the position of outreach coordinator schedules to six step two as part of the leaders dialogue and discussion. Second verse tires to the position of outreach coordinator schedules to six step two as part of the leaders dialogue and discussion. Second verse tires to the position of outreach coordinator schedules to six step two as part of the leaders dialogue and discussion.
Tyler, I.
Do you want to go ahead? All those
I am on vacation, so you know, it's all great. I am on vacation, so you know, it's all great. I am on vacation, so you know, it's all great.
We actually met last week that the Affordable Housing Trust took a vote then.
I am on vacation, so you know, it's all great.
We actually met last week that the Affordable Housing Trust took a vote then.
I am on vacation, so you know, it's all great.
We actually met last week that the Affordable Housing Trust took a vote then.
I am on vacation, so you know, it's all great.
We actually met last week. The Affordable Housing Trust took a vote then.
Tyler, I.
I am on vacation, so you know, it's all great. Happy to do it again.
We actually met last week. The Affordable Housing Trust took a vote then.
Tyler, I.
I am on vacation, so you know, it's all great. Happy to do it again.
Tyler, I. 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 Tyler, I.
So
Tyler, I.
One, two. We were obviously For these So Watermark They presented What you For On the project. So Watermark They present us the So what you That's the So Watermark They So How is that specifically police chief I Who I Do So How is that specifically police chief I Who I Do Seeking How is that reconsideration Police chief I Who Do Seeking Start house Reconsideration Day I Do I Seeking Create Start house End Correction Day I Do I Seeking A Create Start house End Correction Day I Do I Do It Seeking A Create Start house End Correction Day I Do I Do It Seeking A Create Start house End Correction Day I Do I Do It Seeking A Create Really Is Come In Right To Do I Do I Weekend It Seeking A Really Is Come In Sure Make Your Body Great You Weekend It Drive The Area Really Lay Home In Sure Make Your Body Great You Weekend It Drive The Area Me And Really Lay Home In Sure Make Your Body Great You Weekend It Drive The Area Me And Really Lay Home In Sure Make Your Body Great You Weekend It Drive The Area Really Lay Home In Sure Make Your Body Great You Weekend It Drive The Area Really Lay Home In Sure Make Your Body Great You Weekend It Drive The Area Really Lay Home In Sure Make Your Body Great You Weekend It Drive The Area Really Lay Home There is a, I wanna look forward now, there is a, a Kingston's Privacy Agency There is a In Reasignation By The Terms Yeah Communication Superintendent If this Appears As they're always going Kingston's Agency Asking As They Are Trying To Reasignation By The Terms Like The Communication Superintendent Joint Meeting Appears As They're always Tentative Reset Kingston's Agency Asking As They Are Trying To Reasignation By The Terms Just Waiting In Communication Superintendent Joint Meeting Will Be Seven The Terms Tentative Reset Kingston's Agency Asking As They Are Trying To Reasignation By The Terms Just Waiting In Communication Superintendent Joint Meeting Will Be Seven The Terms Tentative Reset Kingston's Agency Asking As They Are Trying To Reasignation By The Terms Just Waiting In Communication Superintendent Tentative Reset Will Be Seven The Terms Tentative Reset Kingston's Agency Asking As They Are Trying To Reasignation
Oh, should we do adjourned? Alright.
Second Adjourned Regular Session.
Alright.
Tentative Reset
Oh, should we do adjourned? Move board of selection, alright?
Exactly.
Nevermind.
Adjourned Yep, regular
Alright. Adjourned to I Move Move board of selection. Reset's from executive session. Oh, should we do adjourned? Move board of selection, alright?
Exactly.
Strategy was a spectacle of bargaining. Adjourned. If no meeting may Move board of selection. Retreating position. Oh, should we do adjourned? Move board of selection. This chair. Strategy was a spectacle of bargaining. Adjourned. If no meeting may Move board of selection. Retreating position. Oh, should we do adjourned? Move board of selection. This chair. Strategy was a spectacle of bargaining. Adjourned. If no meeting may I'll accept that. Retreating position. Oh, should we do adjourned? Move board of selection. Strategy was
Missy, I.
Tyler, I.
And I just want to say this quickly. I'll accept that. Some power issues. Strategy was This was as quick of a solution as we could get.
Tyler, I.
And I just want to say this quickly. I'll accept that. Some power issues. Alright. This was as quick of a solution as we could get.
Tyler, I.
And I just want to say this quickly. I'll accept that.